Okay, good afternoon, everyone. We will welcome to the special session of the Marion City Council. For Thursday twenty seven, March twenty seventh, two thousand and twenty five. We'll call the meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mr. Jensen?
Here.
Mr. Harper?
Here.
Mr. Miskman?
Here.
Mayor Abou Asli?
President.
Ms. Menser? Mr. Brand?
Here.
Mr. Sterned?
Here.
Okay, thank you. The item on the agenda for today is the public hearing concerning the proposed fiscal year two thousand and twenty six property tax rate. And before we open the public hearing, I would like to review the rules of procedure for the orderly management of of public comments during our meetings. Please be reminded that everyone addressing the council will have five minutes to to speak. Please, as much as possible, refrain from repeating what has been said by others who may have spoken previously. Please be respectful of the council and the audience and be courteous, polite, and civil. Please keep comments to the matter at hand and not about any individual person. Please refrain from any verbal attacks on on any individual. Please do not engage in conduct or speech that is eminently threatening to any person or incites violence or is obscene. Failure to adhere to these guidelines will, after a warning, result in removal from the meeting. Thank you for cooperation with these guidelines. We'll go ahead and open the public hearing. Do we have a presentation?
Yes, thank you, Your Honor.
Please go ahead.
So to open this public hearing, I'd first like to talk about the property tax mailing that went out from the county. Last year, when I presented this slide, the rates for the city Marion Independent School District and the Cedar Rapids School District all decreased while Lynn Mar and Lynn County increased. As you can see on the slide, this year Lynn County and Cedar Rapids School District are decreasing while the rest are increasing. Just wanted to note that for the public. And then we are also providing the hearing dates and times there for anyone that is interested for Marion, Cedar Rapids, and Lynn Mar Schools, as well as Lynn County. As we look at that property tax mailing, I took it upon myself to go ahead and compute for the public the total for Lynn Mar, the total for Marion, the total for Cedar Rapids, comparing those totals for the levy rate to the fiscal year twenty four, twenty five fiscal year. And there you can see the change in levies. I do want to also note that these rates do not include Kirkwood or any other special levies. So this is not the total levy rate, but it is most of it. When calculating taxes, this is the calculation that is used. So it's one hundred percent of evaluation times your rollback rate divided by a thousand multiplied by the levy rate. Coming into this fiscal year, the residential rollback is forty seven point four three one six percent. And then for commercial, it is fixed at nine ninety percent with that first one hundred and fifty thousand in commercial valuation being taxed at the residential rollback rate. So what does this look like in practice? The property tax mailing that went out indicated increases in the double digits, anywhere from eleven percent to fifteen percent increase in taxes. The primary reason for the mailer indicating that was because it assumed a ten percent valuation increase. So it showed valuation in last year as a hundred thousand and valuation for this next year as a hundred and ten thousand. This is, in fact, a year in which there are not revaluations that have occurred. You should be able to look up and already see what your property tax valuation was at January one, two thousand and twenty four, for taxes payable in twenty five, twenty six. So unless you have made improvements to your property or new construction or anything of that nature, your your property value in Marion should have remained the same. What this ends up computing to, if you're in the Lynn Mar School District, is an increase of two point seven percent. If you're in the Marion School District, two point eight percent, and if you're in the Cedar Rapids School District, two point four percent. Again, that mailing had indicated anywhere between eleven and fifteen percent, and that is not accurate. This is the city of Marion's property tax levy as proposed. I'm just going to kind of show. So we got fiscal year twenty five and the budget year we're discussing today is fiscal year twenty six. The regular general fund levy, that is the levy that supports all of general fund operations. You can see an increase in tax. So you can see how the levy rate is kind of misleading because we are indicating that the levy rate is decreasing. However, we are receiving additional revenue and tax off of that levy. That is just a two point one percent increase on a year where our tax bill value actually increased over three percent. So and that is limited by the states, by the state. Transit levy is to support our bus services. The increase there is simply what we pay out to the city of Cedar Rapids and to Horizons for those services. That really is just a flow through the city. That liability property and self insurance pays for the city's property and liability insurance. So that is an increase that we just have to cover. And then as we get down to these police and fire retirement, that is for the police and fire pension system that is dictated by the state. FICA and IPRs and other employee benefits, you do see some decreases here in what we're asking for. The reason being, we have actually been decreasing in the number of full time staff over the last couple of years. Because as positions have become vacant, we've continued to evaluate them and figure out whether we actually need to replace them or fill them with something different. We do continue to evaluate needs and make changes. And then lastly, the debt service levy. I will cover more fully, but this is where we're seeing the largest increase with a total of seven hundred and seventy nine thousand, one fifteen over the prior year. Before I move on to that, I did want to share what actually makes up the other employee benefits. Just because it's only states in their other employee benefits, obviously, the leading leading cost in here is the health and dental insurance. As we look at this slide, this is a slide that was presented to city council in December, and I have not changed it. This is just a model. There's a lot of analysis still to be done. And the Aquatic Center would go to vote. So just wanted to share this because our projection had indicated a levy rate for fiscal year two thousand and twenty six of two six eight seven four, where in reality, we're asking for two six six two eight five. So we are actually beating our model, which is good news on that front. And there are, again, a lot of assumptions built into this projection. For instance, on reevaluation years, it assumes five percent growth in taxable value. On non reevaluation years, it assumes three. So let's look at that debt service levy and what is driving the cause. So debt service levy is for payments for principal and interest for bonds. So our outstanding obligations, you can see for fiscal year twenty five, this is the total amount of our obligation, seven point nine million. For fiscal year twenty six, that number is eleven point five million, which is an increase of three point five million. However, not one hundred percent of our bonds are paid with the debt service levy. We do abate with some other funds and with revenue. So revenue would be the commercial backfill and the business property tax reimbursement that come from the state, as well as any interest revenue that we receive. We do have three million dollars. We are abating our derecho. We had borrowed just over three million dollars for derecho. And we are paying that back with FEMA grant proceeds. So you can see that reduction of three million there being paid. Tax increment finance is commonly used for when we put in new roads or infrastructure that supports new development in addition to any upfront grants that we might give out to development agreements. We are seeing that decline from fiscal year twenty five to fiscal year twenty six, the amount being abated. And then abatements from other funds is also declining. This is largely due to a an abatement that was being made for a capital contribution that's falling off. And then we are abating just a small portion with fund balance. So that's what kind of makes up that seven hundred and seventy nine thousand, one hundred and fifteen. And then here is our levy impact for residential. This is specifically the Marion's portion of the tax bill. It does not include the school district or the county. So residential property with a valuation of two hundred thousand would see an increase of forty one dollars. A valuation of five hundred thousand would see an increase of a hundred and three dollars for a year. For multi residential and commercial, if you assumed a valuation of eight hundred and fifty thousand for multi residential, they're going to see an annual change of a hundred and seventy five dollars. Commercial properties valued at one million would see an increase of a hundred and three. We like to show this every year going, starting last year, just to kind of indicate what would have had to have happened with your property, A, for the same taxable valuation. So if you look at this, you can see the taxable valuation here is fixed at a hundred and nine thousand, three hundred. In order for that to be fixed, your property would have needed to have decreased in value by two point three percent. In order for you to have paid the same exact amount of taxes, your property would have needed to decrease in value by two point eight one percent. And this is, again, residential. And with that, I will turn it back over to the city council for the public hearing.
Okay, thank you very much for that. So the public hearing is now open. I do, I know that Rachel indicated she had a comment to share that she received outside the meeting, and then we'll we'll take that and then we'll ask for any comments from anyone who is present at the meeting.
So we received one comment in advance of the meeting from Rose Gordon on Bullis Drive, and she wrote in opposition to the increase in property taxes.
Okay. Thank you. Is is anyone who is present at the meeting wishing to address council, please come forward at this time.
Hi, thank you for the privilege to appear here and make some comments and echo what Rose said. So we're opposed to both the increase in the Aquatic Center.
Sir, would you please state your name and address also? Sorry.
Apologize. Yeah, Jack Dixon, one zero five zero South Twenty Sixth Street.
Welcome.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. But I had a lot of comments, but the your numbers that you presented don't match my computations. First of all, our property tax assessment, mine was thirteen point eight percent. We've done nothing but take down two trees. I've already talked to the county about it. But we see these tax increases, and we're getting priced out of Marion, but we don't see it in some of the other jurisdictions. So we're just curious why Marion is so 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 expensive for property taxes. But we see this tax increase, Aquatic Center. I attended the presentation last week, and I was told that per one hundred thousand dollar evaluation, my taxes would be seventy one dollars more for the city of Marion. He wasn't talking about the county or the school district, seventy one dollars. So I'm not sure how we came up with forty one dollars here. And then we're, we have this little increase here, and then we have the problem with the airport where I see you spent about four and a half million dollars since the last six years, and you can't sell it for eight hundred and fifty eight thousand. You're thinking of closing it. I said, well, that was a lot of bonds you sold to finance that. And I think we got twenty two more years to pay those bonds off. So somehow, city of Marion seems to be, to us, we're seeing more more expenditures and less positive results. And we'd like to ask that the city approach their budgeting maybe with saying, how can we reduce the property taxes of our residents? Rather than, how can we spend more money, more roundabouts, and attract more people that keeps increasing our property tax rate? So again, thank you for the privilege to appear here.
Thank, thank you, sir. I assume that there are staff members who can meet with this resident and and answer some of the questions afterwards.
Yes, Your Honor.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else who would like to address council, please come forward?
My name is Bill Copper, and I live at ten fifty five Edwin Drive in Marion.
Welcome.
For for the last twenty years, property taxes in Iowa have more than doubled, for which far exceeds the growth of population and inflation. Marion is no exception, as it seems to have expanded its budget without considering taxpayers' ability to pay for it. Property taxes should not outpace the private sector that funds them, and city government spending should reflect the taxpayer's ability to pay. In my entire working career, I've never received a double digit cost of living increase while this city continues to raise taxes at an unsustainable rate. Taxpayers ask, why is it that Marion's levy rates are well above the state average? We feel that we are paying high monthly rent to the city just to live in our homes. I don't approve of you sending out this publication with the with the note inside. Please note, the city does not control changes in property tax value or how the tax burden is divided between different types of properties. This statement is meant to deflect responsible budgeting on your part for your portion of the tax bill to someone or or somewhere else. The truth is, the amount the city chooses to spend determines the tax bill, not assessments or taxable values. As a taxpayer, it is difficult to watch as the city hands out property tax abatements to every new project in town, subsidizing them at the expense of every existing small business and taxpaying homeowner. Projects should be able to stand on their own merit, and that property tax money that you're giving away should be going into the overall property tax pool. These projects are using the same city services we are, but not paying for it, while the rest of us, taxpaying public, gets to pick up the tab. From the corn sculpture obstructing the view of oncoming traffic in the roundabout to the bricks used in the streets south of the depot to another small roundabout on a street that serves as a major school bus route that the buses can't get around without driving through the center and the current airport embarrassment. This city seems to intent on throwing our tax dollars away faster than they could raise the taxes. Much like the DOT grant that has to be repaid because the city misrepresented their intentions to the state, I too wish to be reimbursed my tax money that you are throwing away. I continually ask myself why you feel that you need my tax dollars more than I do. I just don't get it. I also don't get that having this meeting at one thirty on a working day so that nobody can attend. I would ask that some much needed review. I would ask that some much needed review be put into this budget, and then it be done in the same responsible manner in which you are forcing every property taxpaying family to once again fit your tax increases in their budget instead of having a little left over to spend on their children. Or if you're a senior citizen on a fixed income, these tax increases affect your budget even more. I appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir. Does anyone else to address council, please come forward?
Good afternoon, council. My name is Mark Delaney. I live at nineteen seventy one Bowstring Drive in Marion. My wife and I moved here in to Marion in in two thousand and twenty one. We moved from Lancaster, California, and moved here to Marion. I grew up here in Cedar Rapids when I was a kid, and the problem that I'm having is ever since we've moved here three years ago, every year our property taxes have gone up. And it's not just a small amount. It's a, it's quite a large sum. And we're on a fixed income, and we can only afford so much every year to to pay on these kind of, you know, property taxes. Our home in California was a thousand square feet larger than this, the home I currently live in, and I paid less tax, property taxes there than I did. And California has high property taxes. And I'm I'm paying more now than I am, I was there in California, which is, for us, it sounded unsustainable to keep raising the taxes and expecting us to be able to pay them. The only other comment I have is, I wish that the council would please consider seniors on a fixed income when they making their decisions because we we only have so much money to spend and, you know, keep increasing property taxes is going to be difficult for us. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Does anyone else to address council, please come forward?
Hello, good afternoon. Olivia Rager, forty forty two Astor Court. I would just second that. I moved here from Cook County, Illinois, one of the most expensive and corrupt counties when it comes to things like property taxes. I own a home there. My current home here in Marion probably has a similar valuation. And though I bought a new build and it's still adjusting, I am being asked to pay several thousand more than anyone would have guessed a couple of years ago when I bought the property. I'm new at this. I haven't done it a lot of times. And yes, I agree, my husband couldn't make it today because he's working right now. So, yes, I would just second some of the opinions and thoughts said here. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else to address council, please come forward?
Five minutes start. Okay, my name's Jerry, excuse me, Jerry Vichard, thirty six forty nine Brookside Drive in Marion. It's a shame that more people aren't here. And I don't know how, what kind of turnout you had last year for this meeting. I was only able to go to the one in, first of the school district. Hell, there's only a handful. But everyone I talked to, and I don't know if you guys have ever surveyed people as far as what the hell they think about taxes in Marion, Lynn Mar School District, Marion School District, and the county of Lynn. But you ought to try that, just to get their feedback. And then print it, print it out. Like I said, I live on Lynn, our Brookside Drive. This past year, we've had four households move out. Major reason, not the only reason, major reason, taxes. Two of them went to Jones County. They said, a lot better there. Life is fine. My wife and I have five year plan to move out. I'd like to move out of all three of them, myself, to get rid of, away from the, from the taxes. But for right now, we're considering Robbins because their proposed property tax compared to Marion's, which is going to be fourteen dollars and, as well say, ninety cents per taxable thousand. Theirs is going up from like four something to five, six something. Big difference, big difference. Not same size. They probably don't offer the same services, but they have taxes that are much lower. Cost me seven hundred and fifty dollars a month to live in Marion, Lynn Mar School District, and Lynn County, seven dollars, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. I guess the other thing I'd like to address, and it it has a direct effect on taxes, is waste. Two years ago, I watched the city put in a thousand foot drainage ditch for a resident, said, the ditch is wet, hard for me to mow. Bring in a loaded dirt. No. They put in a six inch pipe, estimated, in my opinion, cost him forty to fifty thousand dollars. Took them three and a half months of part time. They hauled in dirt. They hauled away dirt. They hauled in rock. Big waste. I watched three guy, four guys, three trucks one day, cut about a half dozen to a dozen saplings, yay big, took them an hour. Now, that's just what I noticed. But I gotta believe that there's a lot of waste that could be cut from the city of Marion. So I'm here to ask you as a council, because there's five people here, one on screen and one missing. Those are the seven people that are going to decide how much taxes increase, not only today, but in the future. And what I've seen from in the future with the Aquatic Center proposal, it ain't going anywhere from until it goes up. So I would ask you, please consider this. Yeah, people back here saying, we're having a hard time staying in house.
One minute remaining.
And it's not un, not unusual to hear people complain about their taxes. I haven't heard of anybody who is happy with their taxes, especially in Marion, Cedar Rapids area. So I ask you, please take this stuff into consideration. You're killing us, killing us, seven hundred and fifty dollars a month. Killing me.
Okay. Is there anyone else, president, who would like to address council, please come forward?
Thank you. My name is Kevin Brady. I live at twenty one fifty Edwin Court. And I've only been here for two months. My wife was born and raised here, graduated from Lynn Mar High School a long time ago. And like some of the others here, having just recently moved from another state, Arizona, my wife and I had retired there. We were really happy to come back. Our kids are here. But when we actually, the one, the one thing I didn't really dig into was the taxes. And I was quite shocked. For a similar sized home, I lived in the Phoenix suburb, Sun City West, it's a retirement community. And for a similar sized home, we paid approximately seventeen hundred dollars a year in property taxes. And our tax bill here is seven thousand. And so you consider, well, okay, there's got to be a good reason for that. But just in the time I've been here, having seen down in Des Moines, the state legislature has said time and time and time again, our number one concern is property taxes. Our constituents are telling us these property taxes are killing us. So it's not simply a Marion issue. This is an Iowa issue. And what I would like to see, both the state legislature, Lynn County, and the city of Marion do is, as these taxes are going up, some transparency in the justification. Because as you heard from Illinois, from California, some significantly high tax tax states, they're still paying a smaller amount of tax than we are here in Iowa. So I think if the, you know, our government at every level could try to explain why the tax rate has to be so high in mid America, I think that would I think that would go a long way to maybe calming some nerves. But also, the facts be that uh, like a couple of people have suggested is that. If Iowa can't do something, people are going to have to leave Iowa and maybe go to less desirable places live. Simply because why go bankrupt? To stay someplace. Uh, your your quality of life, of course, is uh, not very appreciable then. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you. Is there anyone else to address counsel, please come forward?
It doesn't appear anyone else is coming forward.
Okay. And then did you have any other comments, Rachel, from outside the meeting, or was that the only one that you shared?
I only received the one.
Okay, and Leanne, did you have any comments to share from outside the meeting?
No.
Okay. Then we will go ahead and close the public hearing. Um, was there anything else that needs to be taken care of as part of this meeting, Rachel, before the next?
Nope, this, that was the only item on this agenda.
Okay, thank you, everyone, for joining us, and we will adjourn this meeting.